Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for July 7, 2020. Hoping everybody had a safe and secure holiday weekend. Item number one, Mr. Reynolds, if you could call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan. Counselor Brennan.
Here. Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here. Here.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, the approval of the agenda, any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselors, Counselor Whiting.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A second.
I have a motion by Counselor Whiting and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. The agenda's been approved. We would move to item number four, consent agenda, are there any changes on that, Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Okay. Consent agenda? Counselors? Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is that a second from Counselor Brennan?
A second.
Counselor Brennan? Second?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda as stated. Before we would vote then, we would read the consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor Mars, members of council, these are consent agenda items for July 7, 2020. 4A1 approves the minutes from the June 16, 2020 meeting. 4A2 authorizes the mayor to execute a letter regarding the Shakopee, Midwakan, and Sioux communities' application to move the 11 identified parcels into trust status. 4A3 approves the consolidated citywide uniform policy. 4A4 adopts resolution number R2020-TAC082, which ratifies the administrative certification of polling locations for precinct two and absentee voting. 4B1 approves a proposal from Confluence in the amount of $59,250 for design services for trail signage and wayfinding. 4B2 adopts resolution number R2020-TAC081, which sets a public hearing date to consider vacation and drainage and utility easements within Cree Tech's industrial park, first edition. 4B3 adopts resolution number R2020-TAC083, which authorizes application to the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry for its building official training grant program, and if awarded, accepts and executes necessary agreements. 4C1 approves the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-550 in the amount of $45,165.80 from Midway Ford, and equipment and setup for the sign truck in the amount of $133,269 for ABM Equipment and Supply, and declares the existing sign truck as surplus. 4C2 approves the purchase of a trailer-mounted portable sewer pump in the amount of $98,790 from Minnesota Pump Works. And 4C3 approves a right-of-way and drainage and utility encroachment agreement for 1655 Norick Street.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. The, I have a motion for the consent agenda, a second and a second. The consent agenda's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
And Mayor Mars.
Aye. The consent agenda has passed. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number five, now I'd like to recognize any citizen that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. And I would ask that if we got any written correspondence?
No, sir, we did not.
Anyone who wants to come forward on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we would move forward then. Item six, business removed from consent, there was none. Item number seven, I would entertain a motion to recess for our Economic Development Authority. Counselor Lehman.
Motion to recess for Economic Development Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. We stand in recess for the EDA. Mr. President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to the July 7 meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Mr. Reynolds, please make note of the role. Item number two, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Looks like we have a second, we'll go with Member Brennan for the second. Any other discussion on the agenda, discussion, Mr. Reynolds?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Ms. Brennan.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. We'll move on to item number three, the consent business, which includes the EDA minutes.
I make a motion to approve the consent business.
Motion by Brennan, second by Contreras. Any discussion, 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 Mr. Reynolds?
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Ms. Brennan.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. We'll move on to general business, item number four, 4A, the amended and restated First Amendment to Purchase and Development Agreement with Opus Development Company LLC and CIVF-VI-MN-1W03 LLC. Mr. Kerski, that one's yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. So tonight you have before you an amended and restated agreement for purchase and development for the property that the EDA currently owns. We're having to do this, we approved an agreement with Opus and Cabot, but Cabot actually has set up a separate development company for this, and so they requested as part of the closing documents that we amend to put in the Minnesota fund that they're using to purchase and develop this property. I will say there's been about three or four attorneys involved. Cabot, as you remember, is about an $11 billion investor, they just purchased another property in the market. So they are pretty particular, and so our council, along with council from Opus and Cabot, have been working to get all of these various agreements in, in a place where everyone's happy so we can get this thing closed. The plan right now is to close tomorrow and start construction, I believe, on Thursday.
All lawyers are happy. Any questions of staff? Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the, the Shavit Company has a secondary company that's actually going to be listed? Is that what, and what's the name of that company?
Mr. President and Board members, so Cabot has a Cabot Fund, which is a CIVF-VI-MN, which is for Minnesota, I-W03 LLC, they set up a separate limited liability corporation, which is typically what these funds will do, so that as they distribute the money, they, each property is owned in a separate fund. So Cabot has numerous funds in their $11 billion portfolio, they don't own anything in the actual Cabot name, so we're just transferring it over to the Minnesota LLC that they set up.
And, Mr. President, follow up. What funds are coming from the state of Minnesota?
Mr. President and Board members, none. They set up a separate corporation within the state of Minnesota. They're a, I believe, a Delaware corporation, but their headquarters is in Boston, so Cabot's, as they purchase properties and markets, set up separate LLCs that then they fund out of their major fund to purchase and develop properties.
I see, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, Michael, so I follow along here a little bit, but this does not affect Cherny and what we're doing for them, and they're going to break ground on Thursday, hopefully, is that correct?
Mr. President and Board members, so our council, Julie Eddington, was kind enough to put together a two-page kind of memo of, this has been going on since May of 18th of 2018, so that's when we started, but when you look at how complex these deals are these days, actually, two years is not that long to have a major corporate headquarters and get an investment of about $15 million, but we were only notified May 28th because of the financial environment that we're in, that Opus had gone out to market to find a partner in this deal, and they found this affiliate of Cabot, Cabot and Forbes, which is a nationally diversified real estate investment fund to come on board. So since May 28th, to Opus's credit, they and our attorneys have done a lot of work to make sure that Cherny can get into this building by early next year and get up and running, because they're running on a very short timeframe, and we've had lots of phone calls with their management. They have to get into this new building. If you remember, they've been in their building for 50 years in Adina, and it's a little tight for them right now, and they kind of are in a recession-proof business, so they have been working 24 hours a day throughout this pandemic, and they need to move. So we plan on closing tomorrow, getting the EDA's check for the land purchase and other checks, and then Opus will be bringing us a check, I believe, on Thursday for the building permit, and they'll start construction right away.
Follow-up question, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
So the marketing of the other lot is very important as well, and Cabot or, and our Opus will be doing that? Or Opus only a builder at this point?
Mr. President and Board members, so Cabot, to their credits, purchasing the entire site, and I can tell you, based, we've seen the financials, nobody's really, actually, the cities, cities and real, the city and the realtors are making a lot of money on this deal, but Opus and Cabot are not, and so it's really in their best interest to develop that second building, and I think once the economy settles out a little bit, we will hopefully see some activity. Opus would like to build that building, and Cabot would like to develop, since they're buying that site, and it's going to sit empty, so I think once the market settles out a little bit, hopefully, we'll see some activity there.
Thank you.
And there is a representative here tonight from Opus that would be happy to say a few words.
Mr. Lehman, you had a question for staff first?
Thank you, Mr. President. On page three, item number nine, Exhibit B, easement drainage and utility, drainage and utility easements of the original agreement are hereby deleted. Now, we just had that before us, two meetings ago, maybe three, where we talked about the additional water runoff and the easements that we changed, and I understand that them changes are not all deleted? And, so, where will the easement, drainage and utility easements be?
So, Mr. President and Board members, we already have a plat, so originally, the thought was, before Cabot came on board, we were going to divide this parcel into two pieces. Cabot is not doing that. At some point in the future, they may come back and ask us to record that abandonment of that one section when they build the second building, but at this time, everything that's on the current plant will, current plat will remain. We have two large ponds there, which they will also serve the second building, along with an infiltration basin, so we don't need any additional easements at this time, everything's still in place, and we haven't abandoned any.
Okay, so what we just passed recently stays on that property to the west, is it?
Mr. President and Board members, so the piece near the roundabout, which was basically to the north, will remain in our name, and we will hold on to that abandonment until such time they come forward with that second building.
Okay.
Mr. Mars, you had a question?
Well, I think Counselor Lehman, that was, I think that we went through that exercise, and then we never recorded that.
Correct.
So it just kind of sat on the table, and now it's still one big lot, and I get that. Thank you, Counselor Lehman.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to address the council?
Good evening, my name is Phil Catna, Vice President and General Manager at Opus Development, address 10350 Renrode West, Minnetonka, Minnesota. I'm really here tonight mainly just to say, on behalf of Opus and the entire project, we do want to go on record for saying the efforts that have been put forth by staff, the City of Shakopee and your City Attorney's Office have been nothing shy of exemplary. We've been at this for quite a while, as Mr. Kerski said, and you throw a national pandemic in the middle of it, it does not exactly accelerate things, and I just want to say, on behalf of our team, we are extremely grateful for the collaboration that we've had with the city, with staff, with Cherny. I know that this didn't start as quickly as we wanted, but I think at the end of the day, I think the thing that's the most important to maybe highlight or reiterate is, we have a world-class headquarters that's coming to your community. We are thrilled to be a part of supporting that. You have a group like a Cabot, that's a national owner, that's a long-term owner, and at the end of the day, everything was able to be held together, and probably some of the most unique of circumstances, when a lot of deals are not happening, this deal is happening, and I do just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire project, and I'm certainly available to answer any additional questions that the EDA may have.
Thank you, it's, I appreciate hearing that with, about all the help from staff and our attorneys, it's good to hear. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing them, thank you for your time, and we'll move forward. Anything further, or any other questions for staff? Ms. Contreras?
I'd just like to offer a motion, Mr. President, if it's, if it's okay, ready?
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve resolution number E2020-007, amending and restating the First Amendment to Purchase and Development Agreement with Opus Development Company LLC and CIVF-VI-MN-1W03 LLC, and authorize an appropriate, authorize the appropriate officials to sign an appropriate agreement, as prepared by the City Attorney for the closing.
We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mars, are you waving your hand?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? 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 Mr. Reynolds? Or Mr. Kerski, or whoever's calling the roll.
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Ms. Brennan.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passes unanimously. We are on to item 5A for the EDA bill list, for your perusal, if there's no questions on that. We'll go to item number six. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July 21, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
A motion and a second by Contreras. All those in favor, Mr. Reynolds, you can call the vote.
Ms. Contreras.
Aye.
Ms. Brennan.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Mars.
Aye.
President Whiting.
Aye, we stand adjourned.
We will reconvene the City Council, City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for July 7, 2020. We have just completed our EDA meeting, and we're moving ahead to 81A, amend the tax abatement agreement with Cherny. Mr. Kerski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is, again, making some changes at the request of Cabot to clean up the abatement agreement, so nothing changes in the terms, just puts Cabot in the ownership position, Opus in the development position, and Cherny responsible for occupying the building and hiring the necessary jobs to meet their agreement.
The dollars are the same, the jobs are the same. Okay. Counselor Lehman.
Mr. Mars, can, can staff refresh our memories on what the agreement is, what the abatement is, terms?
Mayor and Council, it's a approximately nine-year abatement agreement of the city's only property tax on this, so everyone else stays whole, the county, school district, and all the other taxing districts, and they have to hire 35 new jobs, make an investment of, I believe, about $14 million in building and infrastructure. I can tell you, their building permit is ready to go for the actual structure, and Cherny will be right behind that with their tenant outfit, and Spuck is busily bringing new power to their facility, because they will become a major power user in their grid.
Follow up, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Counselor Lehman.
And if I remember the presentation we had, the jobs were, even the lower janitorial jobs, they tend to mold them employees into higher-up jobs from within, is that the right presentation?
Mayor and Council, that's correct, so Cherny's got kind of a long history, as I said, they've been in, I think, their existing location in Adina for 50 years. I think their employees stay on an average 20 to 30 years, people don't leave the company, and what they've been doing over the years is, as they've been automating and improving their technology side, they've been training their employees up so that they can keep their current employees and also backfill them with new employees, so that, they're one of those companies, it's what we really like, because they're on the bleeding edge of technology, but they're also, they make a piece that's a pretty small niche or niche market in the world, and so they've been pretty recession-proof. So through this pandemic, as I said, I've talked to them a lot, they've been running basically 24 hours a day and keeping all their employees safe, and they run three shifts, and they like to keep their employees around, so if you're a good employee, you show up, you do your job, they train you, and they want you to stick around for the next 20 or 30 years.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay. How would we like to proceed? Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to offer a motion, a motion to approve resolution number R2020-084, approving a contract for private development with Opus Development, CIVF-VF-VI-MN-1W03, and Cherny Industries.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further, further discussion? Further discussion? Further discussion? By voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan. Counselor Brennan. Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Moving ahead then to our workshop on 9A on rental housing preservation and maintenance. And we're waiting to get set up, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a presentation on the possible rental housing preservation and maintenance So why do a proactive rental inspection program? So basically it's to protect the health and safety and general welfare of our residents. It maintains the quality of character and stability for our rental housing, gives an opportunity to correct and prevent conditions that adversely affect life, provides minimum standards for cooking, heating, and sanitary equipment.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Are we supposed to be seeing a presentation?
You're not seeing it, okay?
No.
Thank you very much.
I see it now.
Everybody can see it now.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Everybody see? We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. So to provide minimum standards, provide light and ventilation necessary, minimum space standards, prevent overcrowding, provide standards for maintenance of rental housing to prevent blatant slums, and to preserve the value of land and buildings throughout the city. So there really is no national standard. Details vary, but a proactive rental inspection program typically shares, there's basically three things. One is a registration, two is periodic inspections, and the third part is enforcement. So substandard housing conditions pose an acute risk particularly to young children, seniors, and people with chronic illnesses. Asthma is the most chronic ailment among children in the U.S. Thirty-nine percent of asthma cases in children under six can be traced to residential exposure to indoor air hazards. And often the most vulnerable tenants, they don't complain, so people don't hear about the conditions they live in. Many tenants are unaware they have a right to safe and habitable housing. Housing inhabited by the most vulnerable populations are often the most likely to have the most violations. So here's housing types in Shakopee. You can see from 1990, single-family is the blue color. Orange, that orange color is your multifamily. So between 1990 and estimates in 2018, we've grown significantly in all the housing types. Single-family is still the most dominant. The second in Shakopee today are townhomes, which are considered single-family attached, and the third largest are multifamily. So we have 14,174 housing units in the city. Seventy-three percent of those are owner-occupied. Twenty-seven percent are rental units. That's a pretty high ratio in both Minnesota and in the country. So 11,321 of those units were built between 1985 and 2010, so we actually have a lot of new housing here. And we also have new housing units coming online. So Saris and Flats was 105 units, the Triple Crown, 321, the Willow, 60, the Deco's, 90, Riverfront Bluff, which will be hopefully starting construction shortly, is 170, Trinance, 138, Beacons, 42, and Core Crossings is another, is 62. Today, we currently do not have a rental licensing fee or inspection program. So this is a really great diagram that our staff put together. You can actually see this dates back to the 1800s. There's the gigantic growth in the city, basically probably about when 169 started to come through, but we're still growing as a community, just not at the huge numbers that you saw back in the 80s and 90s. So here are other cities that have adopted property maintenance codes. Brooklyn Center, Chaska, Chan Hassen, Burnsville, Jordan, Minneapolis, Savage, Inver Grove Heights, St. Louis Park, Roseville, Maplewood, Lakeville, and Coon Rapids. Chan Hassen has not done much with their program because they really have not had that many units. But this will give you an idea of where we're at. So Brooklyn Center, Inver Grove Heights, Roseville, and Maplewood have about the same number of units as we do. Brooklyn Center is a little older. We're 50% built before 1999, but if you look at Inver Grove Heights, 80% of theirs were built before 1999. Roseville, 86% built before 1989, and Maplewood, 70% before 1989. And these are similar in population to here at Shakopee, so those are comparables. And you'll see Brooklyn Center uses the state of Minnesota codes. They have the, adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, as have Inver Grove Heights, Roseville, and Maplewood. So this is, give you a little quick overview of what some of the cities do. So just about everyone charges something for single-family residential that are rented. So those typically can have the largest impact on a single-family neighborhood when you have a rental property that's not maintained. Jordan, actually, we, we had a phone call with them today. They had their first of the year inspection, so they have a $80 per unit initial inspection and a $10 annual fee. And then Inver Grove Heights does single-family condos, manufactured homes, and townhouses. They have other rentals also, St. Louis Park. Every city does it a little bit differently, but basically they have a annual licensing fee and then a fee per unit and per inspection. So how are inspections determined? You can see here, it's, most of them, all units have an initial inspection and then they inspect when there's issues or compliance issues. So enforcement policy, some cities, when violations exist, they have a compliance order, so a violation is referenced. They give them a deadline for reasonable time for compliance to fix whatever it happens to be. And then they work down through, if there's something that doesn't happen, there's, some cities have punitive fines or the rental license goes up. Some cities have enacted, which I thought was pretty creative, that when you're going to sell an apartment building, you actually have to get a certificate of compliance when you close. Other cities, cities may impose additional civil fines, so you can see here, some cities have first violation's $300, second $600, and third or more within a 12-month period is $800. This is what other cities are doing. So Brooklyn Center is 100 million, $100 minimum base fee for inspections. Burnsville, they have housing surveys they conduct and they concentrate on buildings that have multiple complaints. Minneapolis has a lot of units, so they have a tier-based system. So the more issues you have, the higher license fee and inspection fees are. Golden Valley inspects one-third of all their apartments every year. St. Louis Park is one of those that they have a certificate of property maintenance issued every time a property is sold. And Maplewood is based on problem properties that receive complaints from neighbors, tenants, and the police department. So what other cities are doing, new construction typically is exempted for three to five years because it's new and it's up to code and it's pretty, usually pretty well-maintained those first few years. Some cities also do hotels or motels because often county health and state department health can't inspect them often enough. Single-family, this has been a big issue nationally. Rented homes often generate lots of complaints for neighbors. They, by including single-family rental homes, it provides consistent co-compliance across all types of housing, so there really is not any complaints of discrimination that you're only going after apartments, you're going after all rental properties. Inspections nationally are done every two to four years, and as I said, they're done more often if properties are not in compliance. Inspections typically include common areas and they check interiors for electrical, plumbing, heating, structural, and potential infestations. And then, or inspection of units, most cities inspect random units, and if there are substantial issues, they can inspect more. And also if there's complaints from people, they'll inspect those units. Tenants do have Fourth Amendment protections, you just can't go into a unit, you have to ask permission to go into a unit. So most cities have been pretty successful in getting inspections done, at least the first time around on most of the units. Funding, most cities fund this through registration program, licenses, and inspection program Happy to take questions and comments. Staff had recommendations, should council wish to further consider adoption of a rental code, is to have staff draft an ordinance and a fee structure, refer to the Equity Committee for comment, and then bring it back to council.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think this is an important issue, especially given the size of our community. I think that licensing and inspection is a big issue. I know there was a big case in Burnsville five, six years ago where they had a problem apartment and never got fixed up, and I believe they finally got to a point where they closed them down. Minneapolis, much bigger situation, but they had a gentleman with, I think he had almost 1,000 units, and he, he had more code violations and would never fix it up. And actually, the city took his rental license away and then he tried to sell it to a friend as a contract for deed, it was a bad deal. And we talk about affordable housing or units and actually in the rental area, that's some of the, the area where the minimum, the minimum should be met for public safety for those folks. And then that's kind of one of the reasons that I feel it's real important for the city to have an ability to at least keep these properties up, especially as apartments, motels as they age. You certainly can tell the ones that keep up and do generally a pretty good job, but there's some out there that are, that are not keeping up and even in our community. But I think this is a great opportunity to talk about it. Other counselors have comments? Counselor Lehman?
Here, a couple of, couple of things. First thing I'd like to see is a, a list of complaints that we've received, types of complaints. Second, I would be a little concerned about this raising rents and making rental unaffordable. And I'm trying to figure out how somebody walks into a place to rent it and sign a lease agreement, if they don't like the place, why would they rent it? So it's almost like we're taking away an individual's ability to pursue that which they want to make them happy. We're kind of government telling them what they have to have, whether they want it or not. So that's a little concerning. But I'm, I'm really concerned about what we're going to do to, to the price of rents because these costs are going to be passed right on to the renter. And the, the end result is the renter isn't going to be able to afford to pay the rent. And that's certainly not making housing more affordable. So I guess I'd like to see a list of complaints and what them complaints were, see if it's narrowed down to a specific area or two. And then I'd like to see what these costs could be on average. It's going to be passed on, so the rent's going to increase. And then how do we differentiate if it's a single-family house that somebody's renting out a room? How do we differentiate between the rest of the structure that might have been built in, I don't know, 1970? It was at code when it was built, and there's a small apartment, and that apartment is going to have to be changed almost every year that the city updates its codes, it's going to be constantly under construction. It's going to be unrentable.
Yeah, I want.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I'd, I'd kind of like to just give a, an example of what we're talking about. About two years ago, I was contacted by a lady who rented one of our local apartment buildings, and she did not have a working stove. And she was trying to find some help to get someone to be able to help fix it. And I had talked to her on several occasions, and you know, there was nothing that we could do. She did not want us to go to the landlord because she was scared to death that he would kick her out. Because if, you know, if, if he found out that she was complaining about this, as opposed to having an inspection come up and find this out and recognize that you need to have a working stove in, in, in an apartment. So I referred her to the county. The county was unable to help her either, unfortunately, because the county didn't have anything that they could do. And you know, she quite literally was worried about being on the street. And the people that this affects most are those without a voice. And it, it is clear that some of our apartments aren't being well-maintained, and the people that end up renting them, and there's also some areas that frankly have, they're so deteriorated that they have bug infestations. We have seen that in regards to some of our police calls in the past where the cockroaches are literally swarming all over young children. So you know, it's, 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 it's those that don't have a voice and those that least can afford to complain because in Shakopee, housing is expensive. And if you have a place to live, you're very hesitant to speak out about it. So that's an example of, of what we're talking about. You know, like I said before, we had no way of being able to help this poor woman, and to this day, I, I don't know what happened in that particular case.
Mr. Kurski, you want to follow up?
And Mayor and Council, we don't collect a list of complaints right now because there's nothing we could do about it. So we get random people, particularly in the wintertime, that will show up at the front counter and say they don't have heat in their unit or their building, and there's really nothing we can do about it. As Mr. Reynolds said, we often get people that buildings, it's not their unit, but the building will have an infestation of bedbugs or cockroaches, and they're very frustrated because now it's coming into their unit and they complain to management, and management just shakes their head. I think from a cost standpoint, we're talking $50 a unit per year for an inspection and a few hundred dollars for a building for a license. I think what, as the mayor was saying, this landlords that are basically taking all the money and putting it in their pocket, it does affect them because they should be reinvesting in their real estate and, and doing those improvements and making sure they have heat and hot water. That's another complaint we get, particularly in the wintertime, is people have no hot water in their, their building because a lot of these older buildings have large hot water heaters that service the entire building, or many small hot water heaters, and one of them breaks, they just don't fix it. And I think to Mr. Reynolds' point, a lot of these people are happy to have a roof over their heads and aren't going to say anything, even if they don't want to have hot water.
Counselor Whiting, and I'll just go around the horn here. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of thoughts. I want to make sure we're kind of capturing some of those excessive calls too, so we know, and I know, I think most of our building inspectors and, and city folks know which are the buildings to be watching. And the, the charges, Mr. Kurski pointed out, it's a cost and undoubtedly has to go to the renter, but I think it's a, it's a fair cost and understandable. But you know, I've lived in apartments in, where the plumbing from the upper floors was leaking down into the bathtub of, of my unit, and, and at the time, in my twenties, I was afraid to, to mention it because I didn't want to be out on the street, because it is hard to find a new apartment, and it, there is a cost involved. But the main thing here is there's health and safety concerns that, that the city and the city council should be responsible for, for upholding because, as Mr. Kurski said, there's no other outlet. If people have trouble and they're afraid to bring it up, there's no, nothing the city can do right now without some sort of ordinance here. And having a livable apartment or rental unit is important, I think, for, for kids and things. Like I said, there's no other avenue. One thing I do want to ask, Mr. One thing I do want to ask Mr. Kurski, Mr. Lehman brought up the, the units within a building, like a mother-in-law apartment, or I think I asked you this question earlier and you called them accessory apartments or accessory buildings, and they would not be involved in this? Could you explain that?
So, Mayor and Council, if, almost every city in the country that we've looked at and the national kind of standards, if a property is owner-occupied and has a mother-in-law or accessory dwelling unit, they are exempt because the primary use of the property is owner-occupied.
Thank you.
Councillor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, actually, I don't even know where to start. But I, during the summer, I worked with a program of the lunches that were being provided for, to the students and I had the opportunity to go into some of these buildings and also through like the census program that, you know, I was passing out information to make sure our citizens were being counted. So, I went to maybe three, four apartment buildings and all you have to do is walk and see. Some of the hallways are not, you know, don't have light. I've personally gotten reports that certain apartments, their sewers will back up and you go and tell the, you know, the, the management and they'll, they won't do anything at the moment, they'll wait a day or two. Even if you have children, you have to stay there or get out, pay a hotel on your own because they won't do anything. I have heard it, I have seen it. People who will complain, they'll call me, Angelica, what do we do? And like Mr. Reynolds said, they are the ones who don't have a voice. And Councillor Lehman said, how would you pick a place like that? Because, because they are affordable and these are the ones that you pay the lease to get in? You don't say anything, you just stay there, you live there because that is what is available, unfortunately. And they are afraid to raise their voice because they will get kicked out. They'll just clean it up and get another person in there the next day. That's the way it goes. So, when, one of the buildings, as I'm passing out these flyers, I couldn't get in. I was like, you know, I tried, I called management and I, and I remember one of the residents comes out and says, well, whenever you want to get in, the side door's always open. It doesn't lock. So, that's a sad, you know, so it's like, are you kidding me? And they tell you, if you ever want to go in the building, the door is unlocked. And it's sad. So, I personally am aware of multiple buildings who are not up to code, who are not safe and have health issues that people won't, I mean, again, they won't speak up because they are afraid to, you know, just get out of here, you don't want to live here, away you go. And they'll evict them and you're done. So, I'm in favor, I mean, if we have to work on something and if we need actual people who have to say something, they're there, they're there. Thank you, sorry.
Councillor Brennan?
I know that last year, the Scott County Public Health did a presentation at scale on a program that they were trying to implement. And I, I think that's still in the process, but I would like to know what portions of this, of what we're looking at here would fit into what Scott County is already trying to do. I don't want to duplicate efforts or I would like to make partnership with Scott County. So, if that can be looked at.
And I can address that.
Follow up?
So, Scott County, for the last couple of years, have been working on a health ordinance that essentially is targeting those particular buildings that are almost a nuclear impact on health. So, extreme cases of hoarding, extreme cases of infestations. And, and that's from a health perspective. This is not focused specifically on just health, this is safety. So, it, you know, we're not talking about there being trash everywhere, although that could be an issue. What we're talking about is the safety of the particular structure. And so, whether that be ensuring that the, the leak above the bathtub doesn't cause structural damage to where that bathtub will eventually fall down below, or ensuring that there is a working stove or a working water heater, or ensuring that the proper locks are on doors. And so, so it is different there. There, again, one is the Scott County model is essentially looking at that extreme health risk and this is looking at safety.
Thank you.
Of the structure.
Did that help, Councillor Brennan? Thank you. Councillor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I see a big difference between, you know, an apartment building, the 300-unit apartment building or, or even a 12, 24-unit apartment building to a room to a college kid in, in somebody's single-family house. I, I see a huge difference between the two. And I don't necessarily have a problem with the larger apartment buildings having some kind of a standard. I also think it would make sense to have people take a course, maybe we should offer a course on leases. If you're going to lease a place, you should probably put into your lease that it has to have a working stove, it has to have this, it has to have that. You now have that documentation that the leasaur has to provide. And you can turn around and take that information right back to them and say, here, you're in breach of your contract and you've got, as a leasur, you have legal rights at that point. So, I'm not sure why we're kind of bypassing the whole system here.
Well, we're talking about public safety and all those things and, and some public health things, but the impact for the renter and the, the business owner, but let's hear from our police chief.
Mayor, members of council, just real briefly, Councillor Lehman, you, you brought up the question about classes. You may remember you passed the rental registration ordinance that we currently have, which does require either the property manager or the owner who is renting to take a class that we offer. So, some of that is covered right now. It isn't one that will say you have to have a working stove because we have nothing to back that up. But we do have attorneys, we do go through crime prevention through environmental design and, and do those surveys with them. It's a one-day, eight-hour class, but we do have something in place right now that does speak to some of what you're saying in terms of liabilities, for the most part, for renters and property owners. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Councillor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was one of those renter, rental owners that took that class and it does talk a lot about leases and, and things like that. So, that it, that is a good opportunity where we could add some, some material if, if we liked. But remember, this is for the rental managers, it's not for the rent, rental or rentees, I guess. One of the other things I thought is we have a, a new apartment coming to town with more low income and I'm concerned about frequent, frequent calls to the police or excessive calls, I guess. I hate to add any bias to any kind of subgroup in any apartment in any place in town, but we do have some apartments that have a lot of calls. And would that be something that could be addressed in this ordinance?
So, so Mayor and Council, we do have a crime-free multifamily housing in place already and the police department runs a pretty active program. In fact, the administrator, I and the chief met with a particular apartment complex that had some issues and because they make tenants sign that crime-free multifamily housing lease, those tenants were gone pretty quickly and, and the problem was gone. I think the Council, like Contreras' point is, this is really aimed at how do you, you know, if you got a good tenant, how do you make sure they stay a good tenant by, by treating them properly and making sure a building is well-maintained? I think, I came from a community that had 5,000 apartments in one year and I said to one of the big investors, I said, how does this work? And he said, it's real easy. The A apartments become Bs, the Bs become Cs and you don't want to know what happens to the rest of them. And I think our goal here in Shakopee should be to try and, that affordable housing stock that we talk about, if we don't do something, is going to deteriorate pretty quickly over the next few years and we're going to have some huge problems, which will result in more calls for service in the police department and it just snowballs. I think the communities that have instituted both a crime-free multifamily housing and a rental housing inspection program have really been able to stabilize and preserve their multifamily housing stock. And also in single-family neighborhoods, you don't have that house anymore that's got the two-foot-long grass and windows that are broken and whatever because it's a rental house. They got to get licensed and if they don't, the city basically will inspect the property and find them appropriately and it preserves that single-family neighborhood. This is not for that person that's renting a room out in a owner-occupied house or has an in-law apartment. This is really designed for, and it's bigger in other cities than here, but you'll be surprised in other cities, how many large corporations own numerous single-family homes. And when a recession or something hits, those are the first properties that are not well-maintained. And this preserves those older apartment buildings to make sure that they're well-maintained and the roofs aren't leaking and they have hot water and heat.
I think that's a very good discussion. I know that, you know, this can be a, a buffer between a renter and an owner. I think this would be good policy. It, public safety, I agree that, you know, if, for a business owner, if they own an apartment, a fourplex or, you know, even bigger, you know, and they keep up their property, right? I, I think they could get a few more dollars for rent. It's those properties where the owners aren't investing and then we would have a vehicle to be able to, to be able to keep up some of those minimum standards. I think it's the cost of business. I read stories about even troubled properties that cities, it takes a year, two years for things to even try to get some momentum to correct themselves. I think for the size of our community, over 42,000 with a lot of new apartments, but like Mr. Kurski said, the, those former As become Cs, Bs and Cs, are they, do they have fully functional minimum standard units? And I know in our community, we have some that don't. This is a workshop, we're trying to build consensus and put some comments out there. I generally like what I see. I'd like it, try to consolidate and take the best of the best here and have this come back in front of us in more of a ordinance form. Councillor Whiting?
One thought, I noticed earlier in the consent business, we added some training for some building officials. Would we be considering this as a additional role of a building official or would we be considering hiring a new building official for this?
Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and Council, so I will tell you right now, our building staff is stretched pretty thin. That's why we're hoping to get that state grant. We're one of the few cities, actually in the metro, that have both a full-time electrical inspector and also a plumbing and mechanical inspector because we have very complex projects. This hopefully would be kind of what I'll call a junior building inspector. Nathan Buska, who's our current building official, actually had this job before he became a building inspector, later a building official. It's a really tough job, but it's a good entry-level job. It's the kind of thing, he used to tell me, he would come home and his wife would say, good, you're undressing in the garage and burning your clothes because it was often not a pleasant job. But I think it's, it's a job that's got to be done. He understands, I've explained to him that this person, should we move this forward, would be under him and we'd be relying on his great expertise because he used to do it.
Developmental opportunity. It sounds like we have some consensus here that we'd like to see this move forward. Am I, am I hearing and understanding that correctly? Councillor Brennan?
Yeah, I think that this should be looked at and then we can go through and, and figure out exactly what should be put in it. I think, I think I agree that something has to be done. I've heard the stories like Angelica and I think that this is an opportunity for us.
Sorry, me, me too. I'm, I'm on there.
Okay. As we work through this, obviously, we can submit our questions and comments to staff. I don't know what our timeline is here, if we saw something back over the next month or two.
That might be a little ambitious, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It would be hopefully to have something in place for first part of next year, so.
Okay, well then, all right. So, to have staff build a durable policy and ordinance, we would probably see this over the winter. But certainly everybody can study up and do research. I think it's an opportunity for our community and certainly to strengthen the public safety and, and give the city a little backbone for some of these problems that we've had to work with in the past. Any last comments?
No.
If, if not, we're just giving staff direction here and we'll just stand with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Kurski, your presentation was, PowerPoint was great. If we could all get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Forward that out.
All right, moving forward then, the 10A is our city bill list. If anybody had a question on that. Otherwise, we would move forward then to 10B, liaison reports. Councillor Contreras?
Yes, sir, just one second, I'm trying to get on my stuff here. School board, district leaders are currently exploring options that include a combination of budget cuts and requests to voters for a phased-in operating levy. Shakopee is the only, is the only one of comparable districts in our area without a voter-approved operating levy, which means we don't have the additional financial support that many communities provide to help operate our schools. On, let's see, sorry. At the July 11th, school board retreat, which is coming up, the district leadership will share recommendations for specific phased-in operating levies to be considered for the use on the November 3, 2020 ballot. And that is that. And then for my equity team meetings, we've been working on creating partnerships with community organizations, opening dialogue with community regarding racial inequities and also assessing our own organization racial equity standards. And as you've noticed, Mr. Reynolds sent out a email for everyone and we had our first training, which was on bias and I hope everyone participated and we'll hope to hear from everybody soon. That's it, thank you, sir.
Councillor, thank you very much. Councillor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 17th, it was, we held the MVTA board meeting. We discussed the CARES Act funding and what was coming back and we had a report on our audit and then we had a clean audit. And that's about all I have. Other, I did take the, the bias training today that went quickly, so good training. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. 169 corridor coalition, let's see, they canceled their 10-year anniversary due to COVID, which was, was going to be this year. They're going to reevaluate it and look more toward a 15-year or a 20-year celebration. By that time, hopefully this COVID thing is gone, right? They are going to keep the executive board meeting to look at the various projects that are going on. They're not going to do the Transportation Alliance fly into Washington DC. Scott County's got a. Scott County's got a travel ban on, they thought it'd look bad. And what was the other thing? They're going to have the executive committee keep meeting and put together to the mobility study group, the 169 Mobility Study Group, because there's a lot of projects from, well, north of 16, 494 down to Mankato, a lot of them which affect us, which we all are aware of, the third, added third lane of 169 from Marshall Road up past 494. And then we have the Dakota Project, I call it Dakota Project, it's the 13 frontage roads and overpasses by the ports in Savage. That project might move forward here, it's looking pretty good. So they're kind of taking a COVID approach to things. Nobody knows where it's going to go, if it's going to flare back up here too like it is down south or what, but I think a good overview would be they're really focusing in on what's important to the mission of the coalition. That's all I have, Mayor.
Counselor, on the 169 coalition, did you get an extra lane on 169 coming across the river?
Two, one north and three south, or wait, three north and one south? Four.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan, liaison report?
I hope you can hear me, I'm having problems with my connection, but I did go to SPU today. The SPU Commission has been investigating three issues. The, one is the salary exceeding the state mandated salary cap, two, the practice of using commissioner-only packets, and three, altering of documents after approved by the commission. The investigator has indicated that she's completing the investigation and will be ready to report the findings and recommendations at the next commission meeting, which is July 20. The commissioners will take a couple of weeks to read through the information and thoughtfully determine the actions on the, on the recommendations. And that will occur in a closed meeting on, in mid-August. John Crooks reported that he's met Napekett in order to determine if there's any shared or combined functions with, between the city and the SPU. And it appears that they have met and they really focused a lot on technology and software during this first meeting. Mr. Crooks has indicated that he will be meeting with Napekett and staff this week to continue discussions on, on shared services. So I'm assuming that that's, that's occurring. The SPU has discussed, also discussed COVID-19 delinquencies. So I have a report on that, if anybody would like to see that. And we will be looking at if there's any way to help the ratepayer or the ratepayers in, in solving those delinquencies. And that's all I have to share tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a question of Counselor Brennan on that report. With the COVID delinquencies, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't there something to like, they wouldn't shut people off if they couldn't pay their bill during the declared emergency? So is she talking about after the emergency is gone and then it's, how do these people get caught back up? Is that?
That's right. Or how can we help them pay their bills in the meantime because those delinquencies are affecting us? But yes, we are not shutting people's power and water off because of delin-
Okay, and then Counselor Brennan, that report that is coming forward, that's talking about the several items that are being investigated for the utility, is it possible to get a copy of that report to here to City Hall? When that's available?
I'm sorry, you really, you really broke up, I can't hear you.
So the investigative report from the public utility, the city's public utility, can we make sure the city gets a copy of that report when available?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. For my, my liaison report, I do not have a report for us tonight. So with that, then we would move on to the administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So next week, next Tuesday night, we will be having a special meeting, which will be covering three issues. First of all, it'll be a workshop to discuss the CIP. You will receive all the materials and the CIP tomorrow, so that is ready to go out. We'll get that out to you tomorrow, so you have a week to review all that information. We will then talk in a workshop setting about SandVenture and just try to figure out what the council's goal is with SandVenture for the future. Not to put too much on it, but it's, it's an old lady that needs a makeover and that makeover is going to be expensive and we can certainly do it, but we figured we better sit down with council first and get some direction on where you want us to go with things. And then finally is the improvement of the plan for the XL Energy Mountain Bike Course. You will remember that you previously have already approved the agreement in regards to that course, but now we're looking to take it a step further because both XL Energy, the, the school district and frankly, the city would like to get this thing on the ground and activated so it can be used by students hopefully this year. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. That, again, is tomorrow, or excuse me, that is next week, next Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
A special meeting, July 14th, here at 7:00 PM to cover three subjects. So thank you for that overview. Item number 11, is there any other business before this council? As we will be going into closed session, so, but is there any other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jim, city attorney?
On the closed session, the motion that should be made is to go to a closed session for the administrator's review pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3A.
Thank you. If, if we don't have any other business, then I would entertain a motion. And Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the administrator's review pursuant to Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3A. Then I have a question.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, since the review has data privacy functions, how does this Zoom thing work during that?
I'm not concerned.
Fair enough.
Whatever privacy issues they are, I just waived them.
That answer your question?
I just, do we just turn the camera off and the sound off to the general public?
That's what happens in a closed-
That's the fair thing to do.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what happens in a closed session.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
But that'll happen tonight?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very good.
So motion on the table and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion all by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye.